Good evening. Welcome back from our recess. And I'm gonna let Brian have to introduce what we're gonna try to accomplish tonight. The goal is, is to finish up no later than seven o'clock. So Brian, I'll let you introduce it and get it started.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As you recall, at our last meeting, we went through up to the education component. And the question was asked of the board, did you want to go back through education? Because y'all had already met with the school board and you said, no, you had everything you needed. So now we are at public safety. Same kind of general idea, the sheriff's office and the sheriff are here tonight answering any questions y'all may have about their budget. You did get a new budget sheet from the finance officer. We had one little glitch where there was a change in the sheriff's office. Budget actually went down, so that's a, that's a, that's a good thing. But you've got a new big spreadsheet that shows the percentages. And then you've got a single page, I think, at the sheriff's office. And that was starting on page 225, I believe. So happy to kind of just tee it up. As you recall, we did a CPI adjustment with the sheriff. Actually, after that one little glitch that changed, the sheriff's office itself, the patrol division, is 4.8% increased. The jail is at 13.6% increase over last year. But remember, we pulled the jail health out of the health department. It's now back underneath the jail as a contract service. And we plugged in $400,000 for that. So there's, there's, there's an increase in their budget of $400,000. There's a decrease in the health department's budget. And then under 911 communications, there's a 7.6% CPI increase. So sheriff's here to have some comments to you. And then his staff is here to answer any specific questions y'all may have. So I'll certainly turn it over to sheriff. Thanks, Sheriff.
Welcome.
Good evening, Commissioners, Chairman. I'm Sheriff Hammond, Beaufort County Sheriff. And these are important times of our year. And I want to expound a little bit on why a budget is so important to us to be kind of reviewed and to the citizens of Beaufort County. Taking office on December 5th, and want to just touch some things that, why, kind of give you an update on accomplishments that justifies a robust budget. We have established a civil, civil division that, that produces and generates the papers through the system to gain, to gain the dollars to, to the civil victims. We repurposed the equipment that was in, in the annex parking lot and repurposed it for the use. And now it is a product that we're using every day in our special operations. We've created a warehouse approach with all the equipment, uniforms, and branding of the sheriff's office to make it a professional appearance. And we repurposed a rarely used, you remember the van, the old transport? We've had it reconditioned, repurposed it. We got it fresh paint, and it is being used in the purpose of special operations, which, as we progress in into our SRT team, that will be beneficial to any kind of exigent circumstances or any kind of unknowns. So other things that's coming up, what we've done is placed the 800 megahertz radios, the Viper radios, we call them, into each school. I want you to know that those radios will go out of service in 2024. So I'd like for you to just make a mental note that right now, we're using those radios as a response, as a quick response for each school principal to get law enforcement engaged as quickly as possible. But that expense will come forth, and whether the school absorbs that cost or whether sheriff's office will submit that. Yes, Commissioner.
Won't you, if you get the SROs, won't you have a radio in?
Absolutely. And that is, that was one of my closing statements in hopes that the cost of those radios will be a savings in that respect. I think it's a great question. Appreciate it. We've restructured our patrol division to give a more robust patrol in your communities and the Beaufort County communities with a quick, quicker response time and a follow-up on incident reports and investigations. We have reestablished a, the rank system that matches the uniform and appearance with transparency. We now have the rank of corporal, correction, deputy, corporal, and then sergeant, which is the most in line with the national ranking structure of a sheriff's office, police department, et cetera. We've established a training growth for each of our deputies. And it's based on the pay grade and the opportunities as they advance through the ranks. So we've created and established the Ace of Hearts Initiative, which is the awareness of cruelty to animals, children, and elderly. That program is one that I brought into the sheriff's office in hopes to identify and educate Beaufort County citizens how to report the abuse of animals, children, and elderly through the Crime Stoppers P3. It's a tips software that's used. And I ask that you become more and more educated and familiar in that program, that we identify these and get those, the, what the abusers in jail where they belong and get the, get the ones that need help, the help. We've been through our training, our office, and created a training environment that is a professional environment. Several of y'all have come through, and I appreciate the tour that you have come through. And you see some of our needs in there. We continue to need, and not just want, but the need of an environment that projects the professionalism that we are providing this county. And you know those needs. The FTO program, as we know Field Training Officer Program, we revamped that program and made it to where it's accountable at the, at the ranks of corporal, oversight by sergeant, oversight by a first sergeant, and oversight by the division commander. That was one of your questions in our earlier meeting about the responsibility or accountability of each deputy, who's going to enforce that? And that has been put into, into the structure, the organizational chart. And you can see that, and I don't mind sharing that organizational chart future time. I did not bring one.
We have it in our book.
Very nice. Thanks, sir. As you know, the trying times of recruiting are all over. They're for law enforcement, our departments, military. But I'm here to give you a report that our recruiting program is, or has been a success. The morale within the sheriff's office in the, in six months has produced a morale that we have recruited and, and hired. And I want to give you that exact number, but it's nine, nine, and that's a combined with sworn deputies and telecommunications and jailers, which is great, is a better number than our partners bordering counties. Just to tell you that a professional environment, that our law enforcement or our professionals are coming to us because of this environment. We've created a drone team and have licensed, have gone to school, they've studied, tested, and our drone is now, we have four qualified pilots. I'm gonna tell you how important that is to our county. One, you have to have the pilots licensed to exercise certain investigations and certain flights. Your sheriff's department here in Beaufort County has been successful, and the pilots are now certified to be there and do reconnaissance, search and rescue. And these programs are to better, to better serve. Another way we have better served our community is implemented the NORCAN program. Each of our deputies are going through the training. We're about 95% trained. We'll continue that training this week and be 100% complete. We will then incorporate Mark NORCAM into the deputy's possession. And that is a defense for their exposure and to be our first responder to our citizens and our families. And we have partnered and sat and talked now across our state. We have been threatened and violated by threats on our electrical grids across the state. And we have partnered and initiated conversations with our electrical grid managers, our security manager. And just to assure you, we have working, we have a working program, working model there to make that a less, like a mass problem for our county. Those investigations are, are warranted. We're, we're ready to communicate and get to the right people to get the right answers Also, you know that we have secured these front doors courthouse. To me, that was one of the first, that was the first day, first full day. That program just took creative management. It took a leadership approach. And we have, it's a struggle to manage program, but it's worthwhile. And we're gonna continue to do that. That'll be steady state while I'm here as your sheriff. So these programs are important to justify the dollars we're gonna come asking for tonight. We're not sitting around waiting. We're proactive. And I want to just give you some numbers, and I'm gonna be complete. But a proactive number I want to share with you, even though, even though the allied is doing their job at the schools, it was my promise to Beaufort County as their sheriff that we will get back, our efforts to get back in school. Well, there's some, still some workshops to go through to be successful in their full-time. But I'm not, I'm not letting that go away. So what we've done is created a program called the 1090 program. And what we do is follow school buses and, and/or go to the school, go in the front door, make contact with staff, and, and just making that relationship with the staff and the students to create this, that presence of Beaufort County Sheriff's Office. Since December 5th, we have been in those schools and reported 1090s 1,274 times. And six months, Mark will be the fifth of next, of June. And we have exercised the time of spring break. So I'm telling you, the deputies, their work ethic, they have stepped up and done what they've been asked to do. We have been in your communities, in Beaufort County's subdivisions and communities, 2,253 calls into our communications and patrolled these neighborhoods 2,253 times. You take that with an average of five deputies per shift for a 12-hour period, and you'll see the math that they have been proactive. Also, with residential checks, 2,508 residents that we have checked since December 6th. Now, where I tell you why is that important? Because our telecommunications are loaded with the work that, that I have asked the deputies to perform is a work that the telecommunications are also involved in, receiving those calls, logging them into Spillman. What we plan to do with these numbers is consolidate a collective data and identify where our troubled areas are based on data. And we'll give you a better service on trying to identify before, before criminal activity occurs, if possible, or at least deter. Any questions? Thank you for your time in allowing me to tell the Beaufort County citizens what Beaufort County Sheriff's Office has been doing. And I'm great, grateful to be here as your sheriff and to the citizens of Beaufort County. I thank you.
Thank you very much. Questions? Okay.
You wanna talk about the jail? Is that a separate item? Yes. Following me would be Chief Deputy Hickman. What I've got, I've got a...
Are you, are you gonna, are you gonna go through introductions each one, or you want to...
Nope. I'm gonna turn this over now to Chief Deputy. And I'm leaving to go to the town halls that I have once a month throughout the county.
That's right.
And we've had this on the calendar for a period of time. So my apologies for leaving, but my trust is in this Chief Deputy, and I appreciate it.
He's not while you can, you're the man.
He's the man. All right. He will, and there are representatives here to talk about this.
Okay. I, I think what we've been doing in the past, and if it's okay, we'll follow that same, is that we'll look at the sheriff's budget first, and we'll go through it just like it's in the book. All right? Now, items, items under the sheriff's budget, and that's on page 225. And we've gotten a revised sheet that is probably laying a hood. There's two sheets, okay. Page 225.
So, Mr. Chairman, I could just kind of tee it up real quick for the Chief Deputy. In general, what we did on their budget was the salary line items are what the salary line items are. So those got plugged in. We knew that in prior years, we, the board had established 10 vehicle replacement. So the number you see at the bottom under vehicles, 400 is where that was, 456 is what it takes to replace 10 vehicles in this budget. So we, that was an increase from our side, plus the, the salaries were static. And then we had a conversation with the sheriff's office and said, here's where we need to be, here's what CPI is. It's, we don't necessarily know where you need your money in your budget. Here's what we'd like for you to stay within, and gave it back to them. And then they brought the budget back based on what that was. So he's, they can certainly, that, that's how we put it together with them. And if you have any complete details that you want to get into, Chief Hickman will be glad to have those conversation with you.
So, all right. Why don't we start at the top of the sheet and kind of work down? I'll start out with the first question. As it relates to local government retirement, under, I think this is probably an error. Under the 2024 requested, it's 484,000, and under recommended, it's 37. Projected last year, 64, is that?
I'll take that.
Okay.
So, so you're exactly right. That's just a mix-up in line. So let, let's look at those numbers in total. So we did have an increase in the local government retirement system contribution. All counties did. And let me just talk about those rates for a moment. So for non-LEOs, the current year that we're in right now, the rate is 12.88%. And that rate next year is going to, oh, hold on just a minute. I've got my numbers backwards. The current rate is 12.14%. Next year, it's going to 12.88%, okay? So it's going up about, what, 7/10ths of a percent. For Leo, so Leos get, or the cost of Leo is a higher contribution. Currently, that is 13.04%. Next year, it's going to 14.04%. So that's going up a full percent. So when we look at our budget sheets, and everybody needs to be looking at that corrected copy that is the handout that I gave you earlier. If we look at the original budget for 2023 for those two lines, okay? That's about the middle way of your spreadsheet going across. Then we've got 64,846 and 384,713. Those two numbers add up to $449,500, okay? If we look at those two numbers together for the recommended budget, following that over, it's 37,674 and 447,128. So if we add those two numbers together, it's 484,802. So you got a difference there of about $34,000 increase in total. And that's due to that 1% increase in the contribution. And that math works within about 100 and some dollars when I did it that way. So, long explanation, but basically just a little mix-up there in the lines, but in total, the numbers are correct.
So they're, they're requesting them, I, needs to go down one line?
Exactly.
Okay, I got you.
It just got keyed in on the wrong line.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you. Okay. Going down the page, any next item? I, I highlighted professional development, going from projected of 25 to recommended of 76,881.
Thank you for having me here this afternoon. It's good to see all of you this afternoon. The question about the professional development, the difference in the price, part of that is we've recently had a increase in the number of criminal investigators. Every one of them's gotta go to the schools that are required to do that job. Plus, we have, we've implemented a program with our patrol officers that from the time they start through different year marks, there are certain job classes that they have to attain certain certifications. So that number will include the enrollment in those classes as well as travel. Plus, with travel, I mean, there's been a, an increase in cost and lodging and everything else.
Did you, I saw somebody, was it you or John?
Where did the increase in investigators come from?
We ended up having one retirement, Jim Ann Laningham, Lieutenant, he retired. Cap Waters was the replacement on that. His position was field. We had one resignation that came about and, actually two. So we got an investigator, three new investigators, plus one that was originally doing the evidence and investigations as well. So it's four.
So it's came from turnover, not from job reclassification?
Absolutely. Yes, sir. And every one of those came from a patrol background. So when they come in as an investigator, there's basic classes that have to take, fundamentals and investigative process, interview and interrogation and different other things, HLI, Police Law Institute, so all of those they're required to take. So the increase in that is the projection of having to have those classes, having, they have to take those.
And I assume the increase in uniforms is caused by turnover, awesome? Or what?
Well, yes, sir.
Or do we buy all new uniforms?
We always budget for new uniforms for the deputies. We didn't do a uni, a large uniform budget last year. We bought uniforms as needed. There has been no change in the uniforms. It's still gonna be the same uniform. It's not like we're purchasing different ones with a new administration coming in. And now we try to at least have the ability to stock a few of particular sizes, just in case. If we do hire a new deputy, in the past, we had to send them to Wilmington to be fitted and then wait for uniforms to come. So now we try to have at least a few uniforms on hand and some of the average sizes that we can fit people when they start.
I'll, I'll continue. I've got, under equipment purchases, projected, it's 204,000. The request was 395, and recommendation is 217. Are we, are we, what are, what are we missing that the department or the office, excuse me, that office requested?
Okay. The 395 was a clerical error, so that number should have been the 217, 957.
Okay. 217...
957. Yes, sir.
957. Thank you. That was my last one, so.
And one of the largest purchases under that was the, the tasers that we currently carry, or September, I think, of this year will be the five-year mark on their warranty. And it won't be long, they'll be obsolete. There's a new taser that came about. So we're looking at replacing all the tasers, beginning with the patrol deputies. So 26 tasers, the new X7s, for the total, they spread it out over a five-year period. So it'd be $22,000 each year for five years. So that's 26 brand-new tasers, taser holsters, two slots for the certifications for instructors to be able to teach it. But with this bundle, they were looking at doing, instead of having to purchase cartridges, training cartridges, the dirt cartridges, and the actual duty cartridges, run about $40 apiece. This bundle, there'll be no cost on that. It's unlimited cartridges for for training, and then as we deploy a cartridge, it's replaced at no charge. In the past, we had to pay $40 each time.
Randy?
The sheriff is saying that these Viper radios would go out of, in 2025?
25, yes, sir.
Are there, is there any trade-in value to these things, or can be reworked?
I'm not sure if they can be done or not. The ones that we have, the portables that are currently being carried by every deputy, they're compatible, they're fine. They won't have any problem. We purchased those year before last, I think. But they'll be fine. The only ones that won't transfer are the old radios that we kept that are currently in the schools.
Okay. So that's what's in the schools, but they, if things go according to plan and you're back in the SRO business, you won't need, you won't need the radios?
No, no. Not if each, every deputy, once he's hired, if he gets issued a radio, we would not.
Brian, help me. We, we got an email from Trey with Senator Tillis's office. What, what is it he's putting in for through the, through the federal budget?
So with, with Senator Tillis's office, we submitted to him the request for some Viper radios to help out our EMS agencies, our volunteer EMS agencies, and our volunteer fire departments to try to help them in the replacement schedule like we've all done. They've been challenged in, in their replacement just because of funds. So we asked that they look at that. They actually funded, last year, I think, they funded the City of Washington Fire Department with some radios. And so we, we thought we'd take a shot as well for our, for our volunteer agencies.
John?
In the budget, we've got, I'm under, I think it's storied rent.
Yes, sir.
This year was 60,000. We're running probably even a little bit higher than that. And not, next year, you got down for six?
No, sir. That was a clerical error.
Oh, I'm, look, okay.
It should have been.
Yeah, I'm looking. I didn't.
Yes, sir. That should have been corrected.
It is, it is. I'm just looking at the wrong one again, because I had it highlighted.
Any, any other questions before we move? Everybody good? All right. I will move to the jail budget. If you have any comments you want to make before we open it up, that's...
No, sir. I am here to answer any questions you might have.
The, the contract that we're gonna have on the health, is, is that line item in here, Brian?
It is. If you look under Professional Services Medical.
I, I see it. I see it. So we're looking at 400?
That was the budgetary number we put in. The proposal that we got back is a little under that.
Do, do you remember what that compares to as related to the health department budget?
Health department was a little over 300. It's 290. So it's up almost 100,000. So it's up almost 100,000. Is this a good move? It's the only move we had. The health department was not able to be able to find nurses, so we just, they couldn't continue to do that, so we were contracted with an agency that has a nurse.
What, did they all threaten to quit, or what?
No, we just couldn't afford, we couldn't get, we couldn't find nurses. When we had vacancies, we were, we currently have a vacant nursing position in jail health right now, and we've been unsuccessful in recruiting nurses. Being a nurse in general is a tough job. There is a shortage of nurses. Add to that, you're putting them in a confinement facility, makes it even more.
Understand all that, but that's what the contract company is going to do, too.
Well, the contract company has nurses and has a staff of nurses that they're able to, if they have an issue with one.
So they can hire them, but we can't?
They have the ability, they have, they have a deeper bench than we do, yes.
I was looking at, did you mention it's a national firm? No, no, sir.
No, it's a Gop.
I got you, I got you.
It's a local firm.
We had a national firm before we went.
We were with Southern Health Partners, and that was, I located out of Tennessee, and that's been, what, four, four years ago, maybe, five years ago, something like that? And then we brought it in-house under the jail, I mean, under the health department, and they struggled. I mean, initially, it worked, it worked really well, but just the market conditions and where the health, where the Board of Health said, they felt like they ought to be focusing, was, was not there, and there were other opportunities for that. So when we had the change in leadership, I think the current health director felt like that was not something that was sustainable for them, based on the ability to hire folks and recruit staff, and so we started looking, and that's, we were able to maintain it locally, which is one of the things we'd like to do. We like to keep the money local, but it also allowed us to find a group that had a little deeper bench than we did. I mean, they have multiple nurses and, and they can, if we, if we had one that we lost, it would take us six, eight months to find someone, and then we, but we've recently not been able to find anybody. It's just not.
Was this bid out?
No, it's a professional service, so we looked locally to try to do that. It is not something that has to be bid because it is a local service, and we felt like the number that we got was a really good number compared to what, you know. We did have some conversations, actually, Major Hewitt had some conversations with the prior group, and those numbers were significantly higher.
Well, now, how are these services going to be provided? Is this, are we, is the jail going to call them? They going to come over? Are they going to have a sick call, or how are we going to do this? What are these services going to look like?
It'll be set the exact same way. They'll have a nurse in, in the facility eight hours a day, seven days a week, and they'll have someone on call. They'll do med pass twice a day, they'll do sick call, they'll do intake evaluations like they're required to do, they'll continue to do Suboxone, the medical, the MAT, they'll continue to do mental health evaluations, so nothing will change in the service level provision, because essentially what the health director did was she wrote up what they were doing, and we laid that in front of, of the vendor and said, can you do all this? And they said, absolutely, and we can actually save you some money based on the medical, on the, on the meds, so.
Well, but I want to be clear, are they going to be there three shifts a day, or is this a one-shift operation?
They will be there, it's a, it's a one-shift operation. They're there to do morning med pass through the day and evening med pass, and then they have someone who's on call for weekends and evenings, just like we did, in case there's something that needs to be evaluated, they would come in and evaluate it.
But the health department was trying to provide seven-day, 24-hour service?
Well, they are too, but it's, it's not in-house, seven days, 24 hours a day. It was same, same kind of way, where you had someone in-house, eight hours, 10 hours a day, and then on-call on the weekends and after-hours for, I mean, we didn't have anybody in the facility 24 hours, but we did, it was covered.
Well, those people parking my parking lot, I don't remember the schedule being exactly like that. I thought they were there more than that.
I don't think so.
And the question of liability, who's responsible now with something going wrong?
Same, same way it always is. I mean, the vendor has their liability, we obviously carry liability insurance, but in the contract, we'll have a contract to you at the next board meeting, we hold each other harmless based on that, so nothing different than what we've, we've been doing in the past when we had a contract vendor doing the work.
I want to be sure of one thing, there's nothing in the law that requires us to do this. The statute actually says something that's quite a bit different.
Yeah, no, the statutes require, and I'm not sure I can speak specifically to it, I don't see Major Hewitt, but you are required to provide a medical evaluation of, of an inmate within two days, three days, something along those lines. You're required to have med pass, you're required to have sick call, so, I mean, there are some things that are in statute that you have to do, and we're, we're trying to cover those. We're, again, we don't do anything extravagant, you know, we don't, we don't put crowns on teeth, we pull teeth, if they have dental work, it's not, you know, it's not veneers and crowns, it's, it's bare minimum stuff.
Well, I just, I just thought when we did this before, that we were providing far beyond what the statute, the minimum that the statutes required, so I think we're probably still requiring, providing a lot more service than the statutes required, because this was presented to the commissioners at the time, and I remember the words very well because I took exception to them, if we provide these people with better health, they're going to straighten up and live clean lives. So my question to the manager and the sheriff and the commissioners is, how many people straightened up as a result of providing this exceptional service? Were, were we not having some problems on the tail end of that contract with the people? Were they from Tennessee?
Southern Health Partners, I mean, it was just extremely expensive. And, and, I mean, in all fairness to the, to Mr. Mattson, he was health director at the time, public health is, the function of public health is to try to increase the health of the community, ensure that the community gets what it needs through programs, and I think Jim saw that as an opportunity to, to help folks and make sure that they had those services that were available to them, and then make sure that as they came out of the facility, they had wraparound services that were available to the general public, that they knew about those. I mean, we do STD testing, we do a lot of those things, and it was an extension of the health department into a facility that folks needed that assistance, so, I mean.
Others? Okay. We'll move into the 911 center, and that's on page 230. We're, we're going from salaries projected of $700,000 to recommended budget of $786,000. Now, in, in our discussion, I think in the expansion budget, there is a request, so.
Reposition?
Yeah, we want to, we want to hold that to the expansion.
Yes, sir.
This is in the manager's recommended budget.
Mr. Chairman, let me pull up my salary spreadsheet. I'll need some time to review that. That's a very good question. Because the, the three telecommunications that they are asking for is in expansion, it should not be in this continuation number at all. So you, you know, you raised a good point, why is it going up 80,000? I need a little time to look at my salary spreadsheet, please.
John?
How many telecommunications positions do you have right now?
It's on the previous, there's a table on the previous page, John.
Yeah, I'm looking at it. One, two, three, seven, 14, 15, 16, 16?
Yes, sir.
And that's the existing headcount?
Yes, sir, with the exception of two vacancies. Two vacant.
So you have 16 positions and there's two vacancies right now?
Eighteen, three, twenty-one, full capacity. With the expansion? Would be 16 plus three. Yes, sir.
Be 18?
19 total, with the expansion.
No, 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 16 positions, they only have four, four right now working, and they've got two positions that are vacant. Did I say that right?
We have 16 total, vacant and occupied. Two of those are vacant of those 16.
That was, that was the only question I had. Any, anyone else?
So the expansion is not, you may have you got there?
No, 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 and I would prefer that we leave that for the expansion discussion.
Well, on the request, there was 70,000 for maintenance on equipment and 63,000 for equipment purchases, but we dropped that from 70 to 10 and from 63 to 13. Was there something where we agreed upon, obviously?
Chief Hickman, as I recall in our discussions, that was some piece of equipment that Victoria thought may need, need to be repaired, but we said we wouldn't budget for that, and we'd pay for that out of contingency if needed.
That was out of the tower maintenance, is what it was. Tower maintenance. And in our discussion, as Ms. Radcliffe said, instead of budgeting for it, if there was a issue there, we would just come back before the board.
So it was more of a contingency, we may have an issue with it, we want to have some money there just in case, and we said, well, let's not budget for that unless something happens.
Will you, Anita, will you, since we're not meeting until next Tuesday, when you review that, if you revise the numbers, will you send that to us?
I will, and, and some of this may be reallocation of positions, so remember the sheriff's office, they're allocated a total number of positions for all three divisions, so it could be that, you know, two more positions were allocated to communications than they were previously, it could be something like that. So I'll need time to investigate, look into that.
Well, if there's no change, just, just a comment.
Sir, will do.
Last, last call? Okay. We're good.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Was there anybody else in the office that had something that they would just love to tell us, if you do? I'll give you that opportunity.
No, sir, and had it not been for the town hall, had, had to be rescheduled, and it just so happened to be for this night, so that pulled a lot of people away.
Right.
But again, we appreciate it.
Yes, yes. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So moving on to emergency services, we'll pick up under EMS, it starts on page 233. In general, just to kind of give you the highlight on that budget, you'll see that it is up about $100,000 or 3.2%. The majority of that, there are, the, the, the large part of that, obviously, there's some retirement increases, there's hospitalization increases, we've talked about medical supplies have gone up, the cost of medical supplies have gone up, and I think we, we advised the board that this year, ECU Health was now requiring us to pay for our medical control, so there's an additional $20,000 put in this, because we, we have to have a medical, we have to have a physician who is our medical control, and they said, if, if you want that, if you want to continue to operate, you're going to have to pay us for that, so we've put $20,000 in the budget for that, because that's the, that's the budget for that. So overall, I mean, those, those are the major drivers of any changes in this budget. But Jeff is here, can answer any specific questions you may have, but if you don't, we'll move on.
Well, I'm, I'm looking on page 233, the amended budget for 23 and the recommended for 24, and that's about $140,000 drop. Am I looking at it right?
And of course, amended is things that you may have changed over the year.
Right.
So we always try to compare original to original when we do it, just so. If you think about, inflation has been running 6.2 when we started building this budget, everything in emergency medical services costs three times as much simply because it's healthcare-related, we all know that, and they've been able to hold a budget at 3%. I think it's a pretty good budget.
Any, any questions on the line item? On EMS?
Anita, can we get a simple spreadsheet that says, what is the emergency management's income by the taxing districts, and what is their expense for those districts? I think we got the expense, but.
Yes.
But, you know, they've got, there are 500 and some odd thousand, $5 million worth of different EMS lines in the revenue stream. I'm not sure which ones go to where, so.
The revenues by district is simple, that's easy, I can definitely do that. Breaking out expenses by district, no, that would be more of a total.
Okay.
Yep.
Well, the expenses, the expenses mainly are for Hoover County EMS. We do know what that is.
Yes.
Okay.
I'll get that for you.
Okay. Any, any questions, line items? You got any wisdom you want to share with us?
No, sir, I appreciate all you do for us.
We appreciate what you do. Okay, emergency management?
So that starts on page 235, here, and line detail begins on page 236. That budget is up $4,814 out of almost $500,000 budget, so it's 1%. Again, they've cut, when, when you think about local government retirement and health insurance, they've gone in this budget and made some cuts to be able to stay at only 1% increase, so happy to answer any questions, or Jeff can answer any questions you have,
I'm good. I bet.
Who's the emergency management coordinator?
It's currently, it's currently a vacant position, and we're recruiting, we're in the process of recruiting for that position. That was a position that Chris originally was hired into years ago when he got to work for the county.
How long has it been vacant?
It has just recently been vacant.
Oh, okay.
With Director Hedgebys retirement and Chris moving into the director's role, that slot, so within, since June 1.
Okay.
Who was doing it when Chris was acting as, oh, with Mia, who was doing the coordination?
We were doing that.
We were doing it in-house.
Between all of us.
It was being spread out across, it was being spread out across their group in an effort to try to maintain that.
So it is a position that's needed?
It is. There, there's a lot that goes with that, I mean, there's a lot of coordination with state EM.
Does Chris's salary get split between EMS and emergency manager? You know?
No.
Because he's showing us on both of them, is that?
Well, it shows, his, his, his overall, the emergency services director salary, it shows up in emergency management? Emergency management, shows up in emergency management.
Okay.
And, and that was, we just never broke that out separately, because when, years ago, when we, when we changed that department, we, instead of having fire marshal's office, emergency management, and we brought EMS on board, then we restructured that whole thing with an emergency services director at the top, and then three divisions underneath them, animal control, emergency medical services, EM, so we didn't really have a play, we didn't want to create a whole nother budget just for the emergency services director, so we left that in emergency management.
You ready to move to animal control?
Yes, sir, happy to move on, page two thirty-seven starts animal control, the detail is on page two thirty-eight, as you'll see on your big chart, that budget is down about twenty thousand dollars, or about, a decrease of about four percent. The majority, well, the, the majority of that decrease was a signed purchase this year.
Yeah, and the key note, repairs were completed.
So again, another, you know, a budget that's relative, that's essentially flat when you take out that we had a capital expenditure last year.
The sign looks nice. I know we got some commissioners that may not go these, but I go by it quite a bit. I try not to read the name of the dog or the cat that they're trying to give away.
I know, I just, I just adopted one from them.
Okay. No questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
So your next item is forestry administration, that starts on page two thirty-nine, and as you recall, we have a, we have an agreement with the state of North Carolina, North Carolina Forestry Service, that those expenditures are funded at forty percent, the state of North Carolina funds sixty percent of the expenditures, and the county funds forty percent of their expenditures, so you'll see their line item detail, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a, a one, one, one reimbursement from our side on page two forty, but, but Logan breaks down his budget, he gives you a, he gives you an overall information about what they did this year, what they're looking at, and then you'll see on page two forty-five is his justification regarding the increase in their budget, two and a half percent tentative raises for their certified folks, increase in health state plan, state health plan, and then retirement increase, so. If they don't spend it, we don't reimburse it, so.
Pretty good jump to following year in their projection.
On, on page two, two forty-five, is that a mistake? The state health plan benefit costs seven thousand seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars per each full-time employee? Oh, I got, that's the total, I'm sorry. For some reason, I was reading it fast, I thought that was the increase. Any, any questions on the forestry?
They, they've had a busy year, they've had a busy year. Your next item is other, we classify as other emergency services, that's on page two fifty-three, three, have the Sydney dive team, the contribution we make each year to the fire safety house, the medical examiner, which you, you remember, the county pays for medical examiner cases that come up, so, so that is, that is slightly down, it's down, it's down five thousand dollars, and that was due to the one-time training allocation that the board gave to the Sydney dive team when they got the new, when they got one of the two, one or two new helmets, diving helmets last year, they, they came y'all after some additional funding for training, so that's where that decrease of five thousand dollars is, because it was a one-time funding, so otherwise, it's, it's essentially flat.
Questions on other emergency services? Okay, Brian?
So the next piece, in general, is the special revenue funds, starts on page two fifty-five, and you'll see how we lay those out, you'll see the revenue side of it, starting on page two fifty-seven, where you see the nine-one-one fees, those, that's the money that you pay for your phone, that's charged by the state, we get, we get some of those funds back to provide for certain nine-one-one services, and they don't pay for everything, the county has to come to the table with, with other, with other pieces of it, and we've talked a lot about that, you have the seized revenue funds, you have the fire tax revenues, so each, each district, you have Richland Fire and Rescue District, which is a combined district for rescue and EMS, or for fire and EMS, then you have the Chaco Winnie Fire, which is simply fire, and then, you remember, the north side is a total fire district, the entire north side of the county is one fire district, and those, those agencies on the north side are, are allocated funds based on a percentage basis that's been a historical percentage. Yes, sir.
Is Blunts Creek missing here?
They're.
It's under Longacre. It's, Longacre is Pintan and Blunts Creek, right?
Well, they're in.
Fire, Blunts.
Blunts Creek, so when you're in Blunts Creek, they don't have a fire district, the Chaco Winnie picks up part of that, and the Aurora Richlands picks up part of that, so there's some transfer funds to them, but they're not broken out separately.
Okay.
But down under the, under the, then you see the EMS revenue side, and those are the, those are the EMS taxes that are applied to each of those districts. Revaluation fund, that's the, the money that you transfer, you're required by statute every year to transfer, whatever the reevaluation cycle is, if it's one-eighth, you know, if you're doing an eight-year cycle, you transfer one-eighth, if you're doing a four-year cycle, you transfer one, one-fourth of it every year, so that, the statute requires that you have that money set aside, so that's where we show those, those special revenue funds going over, so you see the transfer from the general fund to that. Economic Development Fund is, we talked about that previously, that's the money, that, what we call the airport grant, when they, when the county got out of the airplane business years ago, the, the agreement was, you would, you would not double tax the airport, you would, it would be deannexed from the city, so there'd only be the county tax rate, and there was a base valuation that was set, and anything that grew after that base valuation, so the more folks the city attracted to, to go out to the airport, the more money they got, which was an incentive for them, so that's where we pay those monies each year. We, we run, we know what the base amount was, and then we run a new valuation out there, and if they've increased, then, then we give them the tax, the taxes that come out of that. The capital reserve, that's, we talked about that, that's the money that you were setting aside originally for the voting machines, worked out really well, you're, they were able to buy those vote machines without a large capital outlay at one time, because you did it over, over the years, same thing, they said, let's continue to do that, the board agreed to that, so that's thirty, it's not as much, I think it was fifty last time, it's only thirty this time. Going on to page two fifty-eight, you have the aging revenues, the HCCBG, that's state money that comes in for congregate meals, home delivery meals, and, and transportation. The healthcare reserve fund revenues, that's where we are paying ourselves back, as you recall, several years ago, the board took on some debt to do some things, and use the healthcare reserve fund to do that, so you're paying yourself back, you're paying yourself back with interest. The facilities capital reserve fund, that's where you're taking a penny and setting it aside from the general fund. The EMS revenue, you see the transport collections, you see the debt set off, 4H, these, 4H Cooperative Extension and DSS are special revenue funds, because there was a change in the accounting requirements, that said we had to pull those out before, they kind of maintained a separate account, and Gatsby said, you can't do that anymore, governmental standards, accounting boards said, you can't do that anymore, you got to bring them underneath, so that's where we show those. If you move to page two fifty-nine, and, and those are just, those are funds that they receive for programs they may be doing, and they use those, those to pay back those things. If you look on page two fifty-nine, you'll see the expenditure side of this, there are the nine-one-one expenditures that are going to, that are going to things that are allowable under the nine-one-one expenditures, and the state's pretty peculiar about what's allowable, telephone, software, some hardware, the chairs, but radios are not covered under nine-one-one expenditures, so, you know, that's always the challenge that we have, you've got to, the county's got to fund all the radio equipment, because the nine-one-one doesn't consider that a function of nine-one-one. Nine-one-one is to be able to receive the call, and, and dispatching it is on y'all, is on the county, so.
That number's changed to one nineteen.
That's right, and, and just to give you something on that, the, the number on EMS, on nine-one-one, we just got that yesterday in an email from the nine-one-one board, that number's changed to one nineteen, right, Anita? So if you go back to page two fifty-seven, where you'll see nine-one-one surcharge of one forty-three, one eighty-nine, that's actually going to drop to one nineteen, because that's all the amount of money that they're going to give us this year, they penalize us for, for having some money in the bank.
I thought that was, I thought that was a tax.
It, it is.
So it's, it's not a matter of what they're going to give us, if it's a tax, it's whatever the tax brings?
Well, you'd think so, you'd think so, but year, several years ago, the nine-one-one board said, you've got to have a backup group, you have to have, you have to have a backup, and what they told everybody was, you have to have physically, you have to physically have a mirror backup, so if you have five, five consoles, you've got to have five consoles somewhere else in a backup facility, so everybody started setting money aside to be prepared to do that, then they changed their rules and said, well, you don't have to do that, you can do it where you can just send it to somebody else, and then they even put, put a rule in place that said, if you don't spend, if you carry forward more than twenty percent, then we're going to penalize you, because you need to be spending that money, well, we can't spend, we try to spend the money, so they're not giving us all of our money, they're penalizing us for having a fund balance in nine-one-one, but every time we try to spend money, they come at the end of the year and audit us and say, I'm sorry, you spent money on this, and that's a disallowable expense, so they make us pay it back, so we're in this kind of catch-22 with the nine-one-one board that drives us nuts.
We, we, that tax was, and I'm, I'm fuzzy, that tax was seeming like a dollar a year, or a dollar or some unit per telephone, we, the Board of Commissioners reduced that tax in Beaufort County to sixty-nine cents or something, now, if they want to play games with us, we can reduce the tax again.
Actually, you can't, they, they did away with that, it used to be, yeah, it used to be that the Board of Commissioners set that nine-one-one surcharge for landline phones, and then when cellphones got big, the state took over the cellphones, and then they, they said, here's a flat rate for everything, and all the money go, the telecommunications, the telecommunications companies send that money to the state, the state board, the nine-one-one board looks at it, they pull some of it out for themselves, they pull some of it to do things like statewide aerials, they place, they fly statewide aerials every three years, they use some of that money for that, and then they divvy up the rest of it based on, I think it's population that we get the money back, but if we don't, if we carry some money forward in our account, they're like, we're going to penalize you for not spending all your money. Seized funds are the, for, asset forfeiture funds that come to the sheriff's office that are available for law enforcement to use, there's also a tax on, there's a tax on illegal substances, so if you get caught with, you know, a pound, a pound of marijuana, and you didn't pay your taxes on it, they're going to, they're going to fine you for the taxes you didn't pay on that, and then take that money and, they, they do, in North Carolina, they do tax illegal drugs, it's an opportunity to, to go after people, because nobody, I mean, I guess there have been some people who may be crazy enough to go and say, I'd like my sales, I'm getting ready to go sell some marijuana, can you give me, I'd like to pay my taxes on it, but, I don't know. I mean, I guess you could, you know, because there is a tax on it.
Backup under nine-one-one, we've got in the, in the communications budget, department budget, we got about twenty-three thousand for software and hardware maintenance, is there a reason why it can't go in here? If we're, if we're, if we've got money we're not spending?
It, it, only certain things are allowed to be hardware and maintenance for nine-one-one fund money, so under the, not, under the communications budget, there's money in there for maintenance and expenses on radios, on the radios, you're not allowed to spend nine-one-one money on radios, maintenance or upkeep or anything, you can spend nine-one-one, you can spend nine-one-one restricted money on the CAD system, you can spend it on the telephone lines that come in, you can't spend it on the administrative lines that come in, but you can spend it on the nine-one-one lines, so it's that game we play with the nine-one-one board about what's eligible, what's not eligible.
Going back to seized funds, why is there an appropriated fund balance? What is that, or who, whose fund balance are, are we appropriating?
It is, it is ours.
Why are we doing that?
It, it's appropriated for equipment purchases to the sheriff's office, if they choose to purchase items with that, out of that fund.
That shouldn't be in there at all, that, that's a seized funds place where money that's seized, and houses that are sold, and property that's sold comes in, that's kind of sleight of hand putting a, doing an appropriated fund balance, appropriating money from our general fund into the seized fund?
It's not a general fund.
Where does it come from?
It comes from seizures.
But, but it, it says appropriated fund balance, forty thousand dollars.
We have a pot, we have a pot of seized funds money that sits in a separate bucket, and it can only be used for.
Where's that at?
Specific law enforcement equipment or things like that, so if they don't spend it all, it just sits there, and, and it's considered fund balance, but it's fund balance for that seized fund.
It's fund balance that was accumulated from seizures?
From seizures.
That were not spent?
That's correct, that's correct, it's not general fund.
Oh, so I took it as general fund, I began to wonder.
Yes, sir. So then fire tax district expenditures, you'll see where we're turning those funds around that we collect in those taxes and sending them back to the fire districts, same thing with the EMS, tax reevaluation fund expenditures, that's where we're paying, or we're not, that, you can see back in twenty-one, twenty-two is where we paid for the revaluation, you won't see expenditures out of that until we get into the, into the new revaluation in twenty-five, and we're projecting to spend forty-five thousand with the airport grant, so this is the expenditure side, what we just went through. And then on page two sixty is, is the, is the remainder of that, and it's just the, it's just the expenditure side of what we're anticipating, like the HCCBG, the aging funds, what we get in, we turn around and spend back out on that for home delivery meals and home health stuff. Same thing on the healthcare reserve, we show that revenue coming in as, from, from the general fund paying it back, and we show it going out as an expense to pay the debt that you have, same thing on the, the capital funds, collection fees, the payments for EMS, district payments, and then these are the 4H Cooperative Extension and the DSS funds that, that, that they anticipate. Any questions?
Funds for like the 4H special revenue?
It, it's typically stuff that they, programs they do. Programs that they do, like the livestock show, or things like that.
Revenue they take in?
Right, and, and it used to be that they had a little checking account, they just had their own little checking account, and Gatsby said, no, I can't do that, you got it, it's got to be underneath the local governments.
And then cooperative extension is the same thing, revenues that come in from cooperative extension activities, DSS representative payee special revenue expenditures? What is that?
So a representative payee, an example of that is where someone is respons, where we are responsible for paying the bills of someone that, that DSS is representing, who, who is their guardian now, the, the DSS has become that person's guardian, so.
So do you have any idea what, why it would go from one sixty-five to seven hundred?
We way underestimated that in the current year, looking at the numbers, I mean, it's a straight in and out.
Okay.
We really underestimated that, and with that current, this year being the first year, we didn't really know what the numbers would look like.
So in general, that wraps up, in general, that wraps up the general fund, no pun intended, so if there are no other questions, we're certainly, our, our next piece was to go into the enterprise funds, if that's acceptable to the board, as you'll recall. to go into the enterprise funds, if that's acceptable to the board. As you'll recall, enterprise funds are business-like funds. So we maintain two of those, the water fund and the solid waste fund. In general, a enterprise fund is supposed to stand on its own. It's, it acts like a, a pure business in that, or is supposed to act like a pure business in that the fees that people are paying for using that service or receiving services from that entity are then used to pay the expenses of that entity. So you pay your water bill. Those funds are used to pay for the maintenance of the system. General tax dollars are not used to go to that unless you specifically say to do that. And then there's some hoops you have to jump through. But, but overall, you'll see this, the, the water fund starts on page 265. The, the budget is up a little bit. The water rates are flat. We didn't, you know, as you'll recall, we had a five-year plan where we were equalizing rates across all the districts. That occurred this year. That final piece occurred this year. So now all rates across all districts are the same. And there has been no increase in, in water rates, no, no requested increases in water rates for this upcoming fiscal year. You'll see that we've set aside $76,000 in contingency. We've got 265,000 and change for capital and then operating expenses. Obviously, there has been a challenge on that, but expenses are up. As you well know, they're having, it's, it's, it's difficult now to even find metal components, angle stops and things that we have to do to put in water meters. We're struggling to find that stuff because there's, you know, this, this just-in-time manufacturing world we live in, when you take everybody who manufactured out of play for a year, it takes a while to get caught back up. We thought we'd been there by now, but we're just not there yet. So, but overall, you know, it's, um, the budget is what it is. It's going to provide the service that we, that we are, are providing. You'll see the revenue side of the house is at 8.7 million and we're balanced at 8.7 on the expenditure side. Christina's here, happy to answer any questions that you have in detail on that. But, you know, overall, there is no water rate increase. There's money for capital to do some capital work. We, we looked at that several years ago, what needed to be done to maintain the system. And there's some contingency available in case there's some, something jumps up that we didn't anticipate.
The, the in keys, the in keys. Thinking of quiche, I guess.
In the afternoon?
No, usually breakfast. The, the revenue increase is at consumption or account. Thank you.
Questions? How much is in the reserve or the fund balance?
Just a little over 12 million.
12 million, okay. So if there are no questions about water, solid waste is your next enterprise fund? That starts on page 269. We did, we did again, unfortunately have to recommend an increase of $5 to, yeah, it's less than, it's less than a 3% increase, but we did recommend a $5 increase on the per household solid waste fee. That fee is used to pay all the costs associated with solid waste. That includes all the disposal costs. You will hear people say occasionally that they're being charged twice or, you know, things like that. But if you live, if you live in, example, if you live in the city of Washington, you're paying, I don't know what it is now, 12 or $14 a month for solid waste collection. That is simply for collection. They are picking it up. When they take it to the transfer station, the county is paying all the cost, the tipping fee, the transport fee to the regional landfill and the tipping fee at the regional landfill. So that covers all those costs. It also covers the cost of maintaining the convenient, the collection sites and all the operations that go with that. In general, as you, as you well know, we think to some extent, we, we may have stabilized a little bit on what folks are throwing away, but who knows? That continues to, to grow. The, we did in our contract, you'll recall that when we, when we had the contract with our vendor, for the first three or four years of that contract, it was fixed and they weren't able to adjust it. And then now this year, there's, the contract allows there to be a 3% CPI, it was either CPI or 3%, whatever was the smallest. So it's a 3% increase on the contract this year. So that, that's why there's, there's an increase overall. But we actually, that one actually worked our favor this time. So you'll see the tonnage has dropped a little bit. Don't know whether that is, um, yeah, maybe some, maybe some of the efforts of, are, are working. Or maybe folks have just bought so much stuff since they were in the pandemic, they stopped buying stuff because everything is shipped nowadays and there's tons of packing and paper. But we're down a little bit. Actually, 12% off fiscal year '22, you'll see on page 273.
You, you got good graphs on tonnage.
That's all for, that's all the, it's all the waste. Christina West put all that together in here, so.
Now, can you do the same thing on the number of loads?
From Republic?
Well, we pay so much per load.
Yes, sir.
You can't do that. You, and, and one of the things I was thinking of is that when you look at River Road, I went out there one day and talked to the attendant about the crusher.
Yes, sir.
And the comment, I hope I got it right. If I don't, you guys correct me, is that that crusher was reducing the number of bulk loads going out by three?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
But our contract with the Republic is not based on loads. It's based on tonnage. So they installed the crusher at River Road for their productivity and to lower their cost. So if you recall back, some of the first meetings of the Solid Waste Committee, we did have the information from Republic that gave the individual loads from each collection site back to the transfer station. So, but, but again, we pay for tonnage. So the total amount that goes to the transfer station, if Republic runs their trucks light, then they're going to pay the extra costs and the wear and tear on their trucks. If they run them heavy, then they're going to pay the overweight tickets that they get from DMV and things like that.
So that's why they installed that River Road?
Yes, sir. That's why they installed the crusher because it did drastically, it reduced the individual loads, which also benefited their bottom line, but it also benefited us because the same number of truck drivers and the same number of trucks were able to better serve the other collection sites and pull those containers more frequently. So it helped us as well.
A question, I, I guess of Anita, I don't know that you've got this, whether she's, keeps that secret or, the fund balance. Okay.
But you might ask it. She just asked for water. It's a little over a million and a half.
Okay.
Not quite as strong as the water.
Well, if you, if you, if you look back a few years, it's pretty strong, yeah, dude.
It's in its infancy. It's a little odd.
The fund is only, is this the third or fourth year?
Yeah.
Third year?
Fourth, sorry.
Okay. So, separate from this.
Yes, sir.
What projects do we have going on, on sites or planned for the rest of the year?
Improvements.
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 On convenience sites?
At the convenience sites. Wes is dealing with, it's the safety improvements, the lighting going in and regressing, things like that, improving the retaining walls, removing some of the wooden platforms and making this, it's the safety improvements, immediate safety improvements.
So which sites are scheduled? Do you know?
River Road. The three busiest sites that we have.
And that's for the, by the end of the year?
This is a calendar year.
Calendar year.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay. You good on solid waste?
Thank you.
So Mr. Chairman, as we go through, and I apologize because the Internal Service Fund is one of the things that's actually a part of the general fund. So on page 285, Internal Service Fund, that's our workers' compensation fund. As you'll recall, we agreed to do that, where we increased our deductible to the Association for Workers' Comp. We took it up to $100,000. And we took, which gave us a, a reduced premium. And we set that premium aside. We also set aside a, an initial funding for that, for that, that Internal Service Fund, that, that reserve. And, you know, it, it, you can see the, you can see the recommended, we're paying $200,000 from the general fund into that. That's the savings that we're getting off of our, off our premium. We're, we're anticipating about $40,000 in general fund claims, about 20,000 in workers' fund client, workers' water fund claims. And, and then to workers' fund comp, to the workers' compensation fund balance, about 170, so they balance out. So our goal on that, as we talked about, was to grow that fund balance to a million and a half, $2 million. And then we could start using the savings. Once, once we got to a point where we felt like we could handle, you know, pretty significant impacts, then you, then we would come back to you and say, okay, now you can start taking those savings and spending it on something else. But what we want to do is build that fund balance to the point where, where we're comfortable that it can sustain a hit. And then maybe, you know, we, we may come back to you and say, let's make our deductible $200,000. You know, we, we have that to where it, it saves us some money and, and we're still covered. We're just taking on some additional exposure and, and we'll see. But, but this is worth it. It has, it, it's been beneficial to us. We've saved some money. And we, and we keep our fingers crossed that, that we're continuing to do the right thing. Our safety officer, risk manager is in field every day. She shows up on, on, she shows up with the PoliWorks folks. She actually sneaks up on them, I think, to make sure they're doing what they're supposed to be doing. And, and she does a lot of training. She does a lot of training with our folks, you know. And, and, you know, in general, I would say to you that the way, the way it's measured on paper is, you know, how many claims do we have and how much money do we save off that? Or how much do we not have spent on claims? But the real world aspect of it is, our goal is for everybody who comes to work every day to go home exactly the way they came to work. Not missing any fingers, not missing any toes and not having any accidents. Accidents are going to happen, but our goal is to try to minimize those and, and make them as few and as far between as they come.
Water department has?
Uh, you know, it kind of depends. Water department has some challenges with that. The sheriff's office, the sheriff's office has a large exposure simply because of the job that they do. You know, they're at a, they're sitting in a vehicle and then they may be running 100 miles an hour after somebody. They may, you know, we, we've had exposures where you get out of a vehicle and you're running, you turn an ankle. You know, one of, one of the best things we, we did was the water meter system that we put in. You know, we, we had some severe exposures for, for meter readers who were jumping ditches and breaking ankles and doing all grades of stuff, getting, getting heated up by the bees and, and everything, every time they open a, a meter lid. But animal control has some exposure. They're dealing with, with dogs, dangerous to animals occasionally. And then in general, we have a lot of vehicles on the road. We have a tremendous amount of vehicles on the road every day. So we have, we have some pretty significant exposure there. But that's why, you know, we do, we do defensive driving. We do, we do a lot of training to try to keep our folks safe. Like I say, you know, you can look at it on paper, but what we like to look at it on is that people go home the same way they came to work, not injured. And we have a culture of safety. So, so that's the, that's the Internal Service Fund. Then on page 287, the Capital Project Fund, this is what the PoliWorks Director has submitted in her recommendation for what the, what one penny would be used for. So if you'll see on page 288, the jail window, security door enhancements, $75,000. Christina can talk specifically to you about that if you want to. There's some, there's some things still in the jail that they want to get some corrected, where they get some better sight distances, sight lines for the, for the detention officers. We're also proposing $200,000 for the, I'm sorry, Capital 125, for the DSS, to put a generator at DSS. You know, the majority of our facilities, thanks to the board's efforts, are generated. So we don't, we don't slow down at all. It takes 10 seconds, 12 seconds for the generator to kick on and come up and take the load. We don't have that, we don't have that ability at DSS. And it would, it's going to be a big generator, but DSS needs to be able to continue to function when we have power outages and things like that. So that's part of it. Roof replacement in the administrative building and then some roof coatings, as you see, as much square footage as allowed at the DSS facility. So I think Christina can speak in detail about those if you have any questions, but that in general is what she's proposing for capital expenditure requests this year out of the one penny.
John?
Just a general question from, and maybe Chief Deputy can answer this. We had talked about doing some additional cameras and stuff in the jail. Is that part of this? Is that what that is?
No, sir, it's not. In fact, the, we, we actually put out a bid, we, we had a bid opening, or we, we were going to open bids yesterday, day before yesterday, on the camera system that we'd advertised. We didn't receive any bidders. So we're actually doing that out of this fiscal year funds. There were, there were funds in, in this fiscal year to do that. So we will re-advertise that and, and try to, we will, obviously, since we're at this part in the fiscal year, we'll have to roll that over, but we will advertise that again. Don't, don't know why we didn't receive. We, we reached out specifically to, to providers of that service. So we'll, we'll try again. But yes, that's part of what's being replaced.
Okay.
But it'll come out of this year's budget, this year's funds.
Okay. We, Brian and I had some discussion and, and I asked him since, on the expansion, the salary study, PaySta was the first item and the big item, that if he would share information with us tonight to kind of get us started on that discussion. So. And he told me that was, is still, I guess, work in progress, still could be some changes.
It is. Yes, sir. So, um, so this is, we just got this yesterday, yesterday afternoon. So Anita and her staff and HR Director have been working really hard in looking at the spreadsheet. I'll first give you the implementation that she sent with, and then this is, this is all rough draft stuff. Now, what we know is the top line number, the exchange and budget, then we show that 1.7 is the top line number. We know that that's a good number. We're not going to exceed that number. That's why we were able to put that in. But this is a, this is a work in progress and it will be up until it's implemented on, if the board so chooses to move forward with it. It will be a working document up until July 1, when it's implemented. Because people will leave us between now and then. We will hire new people between now and then. We'll have transfers, things like that. But this is from Becky Vezey at the MAPS Group. You'll see, she talks about the salary tables and, and right now, the, the range percentages for us is, is 49%. She shows you what our, what our peer groups typically have on theirs. And she's recommending that we adjust that to make ours 60%. And you'll see that in the back. You'll see how she's recommended that those pay ranges now are grouped and they're grouped at 60%. She talks a little bit about compression and what compression does to us and, and impacts us. Then if you go on to page two for the implementation strategy, what she did in this recommendation was, we did a blended service recommendation. And what they did was they looked at, in order to try to deal with some of the compression issues, they looked at not only the amount of time you were in your most current position,
the amount of time you were in your most current position, but how much time you had been with the county, and they blended those two. So you'll see in that third paragraph, it says, um, or blended service is a combination of hiring date and most recent promotion date. If an employee has not been promoted, then we use their data hire. Okay? And that means an employee with five years of service who has not been promoted would be placed at five percent above minimum, which is very conservative. So conservative that an employee would have to be with the county for fifty-five years to get to the top of the range. Um, so, but if you have an employee who's been promoted, then they add the number of years with the county and the number of years in the promoted position together, and you divide it by two. So that gives, that gives the benefit of the time they've been with the county. Uh, so they give you an example, of course, our paramedics are not, we, we haven't had paramedics for ten years, so, uh, it says, for example, take a shift paramedic supervisor who's been with the county for ten years as a paramedic, and who's been promoted to a shift supervisor for four years. It does not make sense to place the employee in the shift supervisor range if she or, if he or she has been in the job, as if she or, he or she has been in the job the whole time. However, if we only give credit for time as a supervisor, we ignore the previous experience and service and, and the need for the employee to be at a higher, um, higher in the range as of the, as a result of the previous service. So you'll see that formula, they would take ten and four is fourteen, divided by two is seven, so they put them in a range at, at seven percent above the minimum. You'll see on, it actually says page twenty, it seems like page three, like I say, it's a work in progress. You'll see the histogram, typically what you like to see on that is a, is a bell chart, is a bell graph. Um, we're, we're, we're slowly getting there, we're still not there. Um, then you'll see the proposed salary schedule that, that shows the ranges, um, with the, uh, the minimum, the hiring rate, the minimum, the midpoint, the maximum, and then you'll see the list of classifications behind that, where each position, where their grade is and where they lay out, um, with hiring and maximum. So, um, you'll see what positions are, are essentially grouped together, um, in that class, in that grade, so we have multiple classifications within the same grade, and that's based on, um, the, um, the demands of that job and how they essentially are, are generally viewed to be equivalent in that classification. Um, so that's the, that's the wording behind it. This is the actual proposed allocation again. Um, I can't stress, I can't stress enough that this is a work in progress. Um, you will see the class position, um, and I would ask, obviously it's public, but I would ask that, um, that folks, that, that, keep it a little bit tight down until we get it, until we get it to where it's finalized. Um, what I, what I wouldn't want is for, is for folks to, to, uh, to, to see something that we need to correct, because we're gonna go through this employee by employee, double check, every line item, you know, because we're looking at, um, when they started, when they were promoted, what their current salary is, what grade they're at, what proposed grade they may be at. We wanna double check that line item by line item and make sure we're there. So in, in this spreadsheet that you have in front of you, what you will see is the, the job class description, um, you'll see the current salary grade, so if you come down, like if you look at Animal Control, you'll see Animal Control Manager, that is currently a grade seventy, um, you'll see the hire date of when that employee was hired, you'll see when they were in the position date, so that was, um, when they started in that role or whether they were promoted into that role, you'll see what the current annual salary is, and then you'll see what Becky recommended at that position, after they studied that position. What did it need to be called and did it need to change in the grade? So that one did not, but you'll see, but if you come down, one, Animal Control Officer, that's currently in our pay plan, a grade sixty-one, after it was studied and based on market conditions, the recommendation from the MAPS Group is that that actually be a grade sixty-two. Uh, and then, based on the current salary, um, there's the calculation, the formula calculation that looks at how long the employee has been with the county, and then how long they've been in their position, the blended rate, um, that calculation is in there, it's in an Excel spreadsheet, so, um, she has all the formulas in there. What we then have, and then what it looks at is, here's the, here's what the salary plan recommends, and here's what five percent is. As we talked about, um, last year, um, CPI was eight point eight percent, we were able to fund a five percent COLA, we ran the hole, the county employees' buying power was reduced by about three and a half percent, um, three point eight percent, um, for what we were able to fund. This year.
Twenty-five.
CPI was, was five point five, we're proposing to fund five, um, so you're, you're down, so what we've said is five percent or the salary study, whichever's greater. So if you look at one of those, and the salary study said, you ought to get this amount, but five percent on the salary is more than that, we're recommended the five percent. So it touches every employee you have. I will tell you that, the, after I got the spreadsheet, I ran, I ran a separate calculation on it to look at it, um, and seventy percent of our employees benefit from the salary study instead of the COLA. Seventy percent of our employees benefit from the salary study instead of the COLA, which just means our, our pay ranges are out of whack as compared to the market. So down at the bottom, down at the very bottom, you'll see that total number for cost is one point five million, about seven point three percent. That is just dollars, that's not benefits. So then we add on to that the percentage for benefits, and then we also add in, as we did last time, uh, a five percent adjustment for part-time salaries. So that's about one point five total, you add in about twenty-six percent for benefits, and we're right back at the one point seven, or actually, when you, when you add that, you go a little higher, but then we back off, uh, BSS and Health, there's a reimbursement we get for that. So when you put all those numbers together, we're right back at the one point seven, um, that we, that we proposed to you, uh, in the service expansion, so, yes, sir.
Two quick questions. On the first sheet, it says range percentages varied in the markets as follow. Does that mean that Craven, ninety-seven percent of their people are near the max or, or, or?
The difference between the hiring and the maximum, um, varied in the market as follows, so.
So I think there are people all the way to the max already in Craven? Is that what that means?
No, actually, that, I think that means that, um, that's the difference between the minimum and the maximum in their range, in their pay range.
So there's ninety-seven percent difference between the minimum and the maximum? Wow, okay. The other question is, there appears to be a significant number of positions that are being reclassified in, in their grade, reclassified as grades. Is that much changed in the five years, seven years since it's, what, they last did it?
Yes.
I mean, I understand the, I understand that competitively in the marketplace.
Yes.
That the salaries have gone up.
Yes.
But is, have we, have we grown the grade, the positions that much too?
We haven't grown the positions, what this is, what, what was, what, what the MAPS Group was engaged to do was look at our peers, look at what the market is, and then look at the position and say, is the positions, is the, generally in the market, this is what that position's being paid.
Is this position, the state classification?
Is this, no, this is, these are our classifications.
So a grade sixty-four is not, in EMS, is not a state class, grade?
No, I don't, I don't think that backs, backs up against the state numbers, this is our numbers.
Okay, 'cause then, then we have to send in for reclassification to the state?
The, the state looks at.
For evaluation?
If you wanna change something, if you wanna, if you believe that, uh, that someone should be in a different class.
Right.
If you're at DSS or if you're at the Health Department, that has to go to the state.
Okay.
The state looks at it and says, yes, we agree that should be in a different class.
Gotcha.
Because they are in essentially, essentially.
A state employee.
State employee.
Okay.
No, they're governed by the state personnel.
Okay, gotcha.
So, and you can see if there is, um, if there is not a hire date and a probation and a position date, if those are vacant, that means the position's vacant. Um, so you can see, like, you know, under Animal Control, we're down one Animal Control Officer.
Okay.
So I have to answer any questions you may have about this, if you have some.
Yeah, I was just gonna follow up with a comment, um, to Commissioner Redmond, so, you know, when there's a suggested change in the grade, um, it could be attributed to just what you said, additional duties, so they need to be reclassified in a different grade, but it also gets back to the market conditions also, to the dollars, because when we go back to the Animal Control Officer example, that's going from a sixty-one to a sixty-two, it could be that the pay for an Animal Control Officer no longer, the market conditions no longer fits in the range of a sixty-one, it needs to be in a sixty-two. So it could be a combination of either or both.
Well, I guess, the curious thing to me is, what is the standard that they're using to get all these classifications?
They come in and, and interview our staff.
I understand.
Yep.
Us, but they must be throwing that against a standard.
They're throwing it against multiple folks, they're throwing it against Craven County and what their grades are, they're throwing against Martin County, they're throwing against Nash, Pender, Pitt County, GUC, Wilson County, City of Washington, what are considered essentially our peers that, that, that people draw from us and we draw from them, or, or they draw from us mostly. Um, so that's what they're looking at, and I don't have it in here, part of what she will give us in that big thick book is that whole list of every job we have, she'll take an Animal Control Officer, and she'll show, here's what the range is in Martin County, here's what the range is in Pitt County, here's what the range is in, you know, Nash County, and then she brings those together and says, here's what Bover County is, and here's what I recommend it ought to be based on, um, based on all these others, to be competitive in the market.
Didn't you also say that, if you look at the difference of the job that you're doing, I, I, I would love to know if you're an Animal Control Officer, how much have, what are you doing in two thousand and twenty-three that you weren't doing in two thousand and twenty? I mean, that's what I would love to.
Yeah, so, I mean, so yes, there's some different things we're doing, more education for our folks, more training, um.
I mean, if I might change the job, the training is, is, I mean, I'd like to know what changes. I'd like to know what changes the job, I mean, you, if you, I mean, some of us think 'cause you're an Animal Control Officer, you go out and catch wild animals or dogs or stray cats or something, but, but that's not necessarily true all the time, I mean, it's, it's that you're, uh, euthanizing dogs or cats or, or whatever, I mean, that's what I would love to see, I mean, I mean, in, in New Bern and Greenville, they're gonna always be above Bover County, I mean, I mean, it's, it's, it's one of those things that you're gonna have to deal with, I mean, we never gonna be able to compete with, with, uh, Pitt County and Wake County and those other counties like that, but different jobs have changed that we, or, well, I didn't say we, that, 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 they are employees required to do. I'd love to know what some of those changes are.
So Commissioner Booth, when we get the full study, if you remember last time in two thousand and seventeen, that book was about that thick.
Yeah.
And it does include a, uh, job description for each position, so you will get to see a whole narrative on everyone's job duties.
I understand that, but I'm, what I was, what I was basing though, I wanna see what changes, I mean, in two thousand and nineteen.
We've got it, we've got it for two thousand and seventeen, and we've got it for two thousand and twenty-three, so, you know, you'd almost have to sit, either talk to the employee or sit down and talk and compare the two to see, you know, what changed on.
I mean, that, like I said, the manager said we require them to go to more education, uh, more training, and, I mean, were we, were we requiring it in two thousand and nineteen?
I don't think we had the opportunity, I think we're trying to grow our folks and have them more educated and be able to handle, I mean, it provides a higher level of service. Um, I know occasionally we've been accused of providing too high a level of service, um, but, you know, I.
That's the thing, I mean, I, I mean, I'm, I'm pleased with what has happened, but I just wanted to know what, what was addressed.
So you're trying to justify the increase?
Yes, sir.
Well, it, it's not, I mean, that's part of it, so if the, if the grade changed, if, if there were, if there were extensive changes in what duties they were performing, that may, that may impact the change, but it's mostly, what is the market? You know, what does it take to hire, what does it take in the market for us to hire an Animal Control Officer? And it's not what it was four years ago, it's not what it was two years ago. We are not immune from the impacts that every private industry is seeing right now. If any of you, I mean, we are not immune from that, and if, if we don't stay current with the market, and if we don't do what we need to do for our most valuable asset, which is our employees, then we're going to lose those employees. And you can, you can do what's right and pay them what they need to be paid in accordance with the market, or you can lose them, and then we will struggle to find people, and then we will again pay additional people, I mean, we're not, we don't have the luxury of saying, I'm sorry, a deputy's not working today, or I'm sorry, a paramedic's not working today. We have a level of service that we're required to maintain, and, um, and if we can't, if we can't keep our human capital in place, then we're not gonna be able to do that.
This may be too much information for me to be talking about, but we've been talking about Animal Control Officers as our example. Um, you know, you look on the, the sheet and an Animal Control Officer right now is currently making thirty-four thousand, three oh seven a year. And I had a meeting with Melanie, the Director, because we're looking at trying to do some exciting things at Animal Control, and saw a picture of an Animal Control Officer with blood all over her face where she was bitten by a dangerous dog, found out that they have to cut the heads of animals off to have them tested for rabies. I said, you mean the Animal Control Officer that's making thirty-four thousand dollars a year does that? She said, yes. Um, was out there helping them make a deposit last week, and they brought in two dangerous dogs. So just, just to let you know that.
I understand what you're saying, but in two thousand, they were, they were cutting dogs' heads off. In, 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 in two thousand, the, the dogs were biting food.
They were, they were.
Yeah, but, but that's, that's the point that I was trying to get, I, I mean, not that they're not qualified, now you take, you go to New York today, people are dying to get a job picking up trash, that pays a, a heck of a lot of money.
The other piece of this is I think, um, COVID changed the whole marketplace, um, so now, that, that Animal Control Officer that's making thirty-four thousand dollars a year, with the way salaries have gone crazy after COVID, she can probably go get a job anywhere making that and not have to cut the heads off dogs and not have to deal with dangerous dogs, not get bitten, things like that, so that just drives the market up, is what I'm trying to say for our positions.
I understand what you're saying, but I don't see food line paying no thirty-four thousand dollars, I just don't think, I, I just don't believe it, but I understand exactly what you're saying, and, and it's true, you're telling the truth.
So, so I, I guess just kind of wrap it up, um, and I know the board wants to take some time to, to look at this and, and, and we'll have some additional conversations about it. Um, but what I would say to you is, again, we are not immune from the employment pressures that everybody's facing, um, and, uh, and if we wanna continue to be able to do what we need to do, and we need to be able to pay people what they, what they, what it brings in the market, otherwise, we're not gonna be in that business. Um, and if the board wants to get out of that business, then get out of that business, but, um, some of those things, some of those things, we don't have the luxury of getting out of that business, and we still gotta staff and we still gotta do it. Um, and our most valuable, we can have the nicest equipment there is in the world, but our most valuable resource are our employees, and, um, and, you know, we, we need to try to do what's right by our employees and look after them, and, and this budget, um, this budget is such that, in the recommended budget, we've identified surplus, we've identified surplus where you can fully fund this, you can fully fund this pay study, um, with your surplus, and it, there are reoccurring expenses that come out of this, and we project you'll be, you'll be able to cover those moving forward. Um, we were not able to do that last time, we struggled for several years, to the point where it took us a while before we could put the last pay plan in place. So I think you have the opportunity, um, it's up to the board to decide whether you wanna do that or not. We're happy to get you any information you need, answer any questions you have, um, but ultimately, it's, it's a policy decision by the board to decide what you wanna do, so, Mr. Chairman, if there's anything.
Thank you, thank you, Brian. Ed and I were on the training for ethics for re-elected officials, and one thing that's been coming up is on the nonprofit, the one thing that I got. been coming up is on the nonprofit, the one thing that I got out of that stand was that if you serve on the board of a nonprofit, and then you turn around and you're going to vote as a commissioner to give them an allocation during the budget process, that needs to be pulled out of the big budget and voted on as an individual item. The same way when we consider the school board increases, because we have two commissioners that their spasse is involved, with, that would have to be pulled out and voted on as a separate item.
Yeah, I, I think, because you dealt with this last year, when they asked for, and I think there was a request for an increase in school board salaries. So in general, I think what you did last year was you pulled those out because you had the commissioners who, who essentially, I mean, if you're voting to put, this may sound bad, if you're voting to put money in your own pocket, you know, from your immediate, immediate family, then you need to recuse yourself from that. If you're voting to provide funding to the school system as a whole, then, then you're okay, but that's why I think last year y'all broke out the piece, and you would probably need to do the same thing this year.
Same thing.
Or, like you say, if you are serving on a nonprofit board, you are required by, by the new law to do that now. You, you have to, you have to get out of that.
This is something in addition to what I'm talking about. This has nothing to do with what I'm talking about. What I'm talking about is that there's a certain amount of money that is allocated for non-governmental agencies that are quasi-public, quasi-private, NGOs, that kind of thing. And in order for us to be doing this in a manner, as explained to me, a manner that the general, new general statute dictates, we need to be in a position to organize ourselves to provide oversight of that money being allocated, and we need to have some kind of agreement, whether it's a two-party contract or whatever, with the people receiving the money. That's what I heard, until I, I am told otherwise or shown otherwise by general statute and opinions, not blogs. That's the way I'm going to see it.
That, that was not, that was not in ethics training that we had.
Well, that's what we, that's what I heard. We, we had a lot of discussion on that one.
You went in, you had yours in person, right?
Yes.
Okay, which probably is a little bit different. Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna recess until next Tuesday night, May the 30th, at 5 o'clock. So-
You just have to understand, that's why I come to you, that's why I'm explaining why I'm here.
Yes, that, that will be the expansion discussion, so, good evening.